Good idea if he runs it, if he can't even get the order.
I think it's a capital suggestion. He's already one step ahead of me. I don't know how to work that thing.
Okay, we're good to go there?
Okay, Johnny.
All right, well, Shane's insistence, I'm gonna run the meeting tonight, so.
Which I still can insist till December sixteenth.
He's lazy, lazy and shameful, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Anyway. So tonight at the city council work session on the proposed regular agenda, we're going to go ahead and move number four up to the top because we're very appreciative of this group coming to our city. So first will be resolution approving the docking agreement with Viking USA LLC.
Well, thanks, guys. Chelsea LaRue with the Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I was really excited a couple of weeks ago when I got a phone call that, you know, there's been this mysterious boat company out there Viking and they have, it's kind of a sought after company and they have decided that they would like to dock here in Burlington. So we're really excited about that. They will launch their first boat in 2022. And then we also have dates already picked out for 23. So those are the two initial years, but then we'll be looking to kind of establish a long-term agreement with them as well. And then the C V B is happy to take over manning the tours and all of that with them as well, once they are here in town. And we have David Senneman with Viking River Cruises here to kind of explain the agreement and go over all of that.
Okay.
Is that Simmons?
Yes, good afternoon. How are you all doing?
Good, how about yourself?
Good. You can tell I live in Texas, right? And it was twenty-eight degrees there this morning too, which is really rare. So fourteen, I'm not that cold here today.
Don't brag. Twenty-eight degrees.
Yeah. I've seen some amazing work in the last two weeks. I picked up the phone call and picked up the phone and said we'd like to go to Burlington and two weeks later we're on the agenda. So that's, that shows a really, a good, good feel towards tourism here in Burlington. We are a company, does anyone know who, has anyone been on a Viking cruise? Okay, you've seen our ads. We spend quite a bit of money on ads. So we are currently a seventy-one vessel riverboat company in Europe. And we have presently six cruise ships. They're not the big mega ships, they're nine hundred and eighty-five passengers instead of the three thousand you see with Carnival and those. So we believe in being much smaller. We've just ordered our fourteenth cruise ship. And we've ordered ten more riverboats. So we're a pretty big company. Couple of billion dollars a year in revenue. Yeah, really quite big. So I used to be with the Delta Queen Steamboat Company as an executive with them for about thirteen years. And they came to me about eight years ago and said, we'd like to put a product on the Mississippi. Eighty-five percent of their business comes from North America, yet we have no product here. So we've been putting this product together for a long time. Our problem has been that we're a foreign entity. So there's something called the Jones Act. And we had to work through the Jones Act. All that is done. We will actually not own the vessel. It'll be owned by an American company. It'll be operated by an American company. It'll be manned by an American crew. And then we will do all the marketing and we will run all the hotel and shore and entertainment operations on the vessel. And that's how you work it with, through the Jones Act. We are currently ordering one vessel. We should have it in June of two thousand twenty-two. Our plan is to have somewhere between six and eight vessels. We believe the market is bigger than that. Viking is a tremendous marketing company. They totally understand what the demand is. And so the way it works is that we will keep ordering the boats until our customers say, okay, that's enough. And that's how it works.
There you go.
Yeah. So we definitely plan to have six to eight. So we're very thankful that what we're looking for, and I think this is the most important conversation we're gonna have, or actually the most important sentence I'm about to say, is we can't sell something that we can't deliver. And I've made this presentation to fifteen different councils up and down the Mississippi River and said to them, your mother is on our vessel. She paid quite a bit of money. She's sitting in the middle of the Mississippi River and she can't get into that dock. We can't do that. Now, what I did say, I understand you're leaving, but I usually have the mayor's cell phone numbers. And I said, well, I'm gonna give my mother your cell phone number. She's gonna call you. And when she lands, she's gonna beat you with a broom. But as you understand it, it's really important that we're gonna open reservations here probably in February. We will sell out that boat very, very quickly. And we have to be able to deliver it two years from that date that we're gonna be able to get into Burlington. So you folks have looked at the dates for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. The real reason for me to come is I need a long-term commitment. We're signing a twenty-year deal with all the ports because that's the charter agreement. Our charter agreement with S West is for twenty years with options, but twenty years. So we're looking for the ability to be able to get into Burlington every single year without question so that we can sell our product. Okay? That's really the crux of what I wanted to get across today. Do you have any questions at all about Viking or what we're gonna be doing?
Well, no, no questions about Viking. How, how do you handle, because unfortunately we've had some flooding here the last couple of years. So when there are, even though with our flood wall, we should be resolved with that. When are, when you do have flooding in some of those ports, so how do you get the people off the boat? Extended dock or?
Yeah, no, the, the issue is pretty simple. If you can't get under the bridge, you can't come upriver.
Okay, gotcha.
And it's very simple. So Hannibal, the, the whole rule of thumb is you don't go above St. Louis before July the fifth. However, for the last two years, that is going out the window, right? Because there's been flooding up here. I was in Davenport last week. And their park where we were gonna put the boat is still flooded today. So we have to come up with an alternative to that, even though you can still get under the bridges. So what you do is it costs you a tremendous amount of money because you have to reroute the whole thing. So you'll probably go to Ohio, you change to the lower, you've gotta change everybody's air, you've gotta buy hotels. It's a very expensive deal when you can't deliver. But you do your best you can. So we're gonna sell this cruise and if we can't deliver it, we just change it to something else. But we all know way ahead of time you can or can't make it.
Sure. Okay, cool. Except for I'm excited that you're considering coming to Burlington. That's fantastic.
It's a done deal as far as I'm concerned for the first two years, but I really wanna work with you folks on how to, how to get an extended contract for, for twenty years.
I don't think it's gonna be too hard.
Okay, very good. Thanks for your time, y'all.
You bet. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to the top of the proposed regular agenda. We'll have some mayor's award. Oh, did you have something else to say? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did anybody else have anything to ask staff?
Did you have more questions?
No, I think I'm satisfied.
Okay.
I couldn't tell what you were doing with the arm motion over there.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Back to the top, mayor's awards. And then number two will be a public hearing for consideration of the sale of a portion of properly locally known as seven oh nine South Eighth Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
This is again a property we acquired through the abandoned building program at seven oh nine South Eighth. It's one that was demolished. It was in very poor condition. Basically, the floor and foundation were, I guess, in poor condition that they weren't stable. So it was demolished. Both adjacent property owners have expressed interest in acquiring the lot. So we're looking to split the lot to enlarge their lot sizes for seven oh seven and seven eleven South Eighth. Have had discussion with both of them. So they each get twenty feet and sold for five hundred dollars each to those adjacent property owners.
Any questions?
I'm good.
I'm good too. Moving on, go to the proposed consent agenda. We have a resolution approving, approving, I'm sorry, why did I skip?
Number three.
Oh, number three. Sorry. That's why I'm practicing, I guess. Public hearing consideration for, of consideration of plans and specifications for the two thousand nineteen Lewis Street Sewer Repair Project. Nick?
So this project is, is not an emergency, but we do have a collapse of a sewer system. Eric will be throwing up kind of a map here to show the, the location of where it's at. It's off of Lewis Street, hence the name. So the red line going down is, is, it collects the laterals and it drops it down the hillside towards the, the arch sewer. The, this is one of a staff drop, just to kind of give you an idea where it's at. The top purple circle, if you can kind of make that out, that's where we have a sinkhole, kind of the first indication of what we need to do. Or that, that cued us up to looking at it. So what this entails is having to excavate and replace the pipe. If you could hit the next slide. This is what it looks like. So the combined sewer, the arch sewer is on the bottom right there. What we have is in the top left, the sewer is collapsed and broken. However, some enough of the sewer is still there that's allowing flow to happen. If you go back, I'm sorry, I put the numbers through this together very quickly. We'll bid it out over the next month and a half and it work will transpire in the spring. It's a difficult project to estimate because of the depth that you're going. The, the, the best shot that we got, it's about a forty-foot drop that we have to try and get down in there and excavate. So that's kind of the reason why you see the hundred and twenty-five to hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimation from Jesse. Is that it's, it's a pretty difficult sewer to get to. It isn't, isn't a difficult fix once you get there. It's just, there's a lot of depth to go through, so. Unfortunately, with the sewer system of the age that we have, things like this happen. So we have to try and repair them, so.
So are we, we're not, are we not experiencing any property damage to any homeowners by not pursuing it now?
Some of the ground has kind of sunk in. I know that there is a property owner that's wanting to sell. And so we need to get the proper easements though to get in there and work. Just with that depth, you're gonna need a lot of clear zone to be able to, to work around. So there's some things we have to jump through to be able to do that.
One of those deals.
Any questions, Shane?
I'm good.
That's us. Okay, now the proposed consent agenda. We have a resolution approving nuisance and abatements for various properties. Resolution approving annual urban renewal report. Do we go through these individually?
So the first one, this annual urban renewal report, obviously, it's due annually, December first. So this report is the history of what's been going on in our TIF fund for fiscal year nineteen. So as you kind of go through the report, it's electronic report, so that's what's in your packet is what actually gets filed with the state. But basically, it starts off with what's our TIF cash balance, what's the revenue we brought in, and then what were our expenditures. So this is a way for the state to get a report from all the communities who's using TIF, how much revenue is being generated statewide, how many expenses. Each one of our expenses, of course, is linked to a TIF project, which you can see that back in the report too. If anybody has any questions of all the TIF projects we've done and what kind of debt we're paying back. It also, you know, lists our TIF rebates. So just a recap of what happened in the fiscal year FY nineteen.
How long have we been doing this again?
You mean this report?
Yeah.
It started in twenty twelve, it looks like, was required. We've been doing TIF longer than that. It's just the reporting requirements came then, so. These reports also, once I file it, you can go onto the state's website. This is the Department of Management, yeah, Department of Management. If anybody would wanna go out and see last year's reports, and then once this one gets filed after December first, they're, they're all out there by each community, each city that uses TIF, so.
That's nice.
Any questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on, resolution approving annual financial report.
So here's another report the state requires that's due December first. Again, this is a recap of everything that happened in our funds for fiscal year nineteen, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. This, the front page that's in the packet is the recap by, basically, it's, it's kind of set up by how we budget. So it's looking, how did the expenses come in compared to how we budgeted? So the good news is, is we didn't go over any budgeted expenditures or revenues for the year FY nineteen. This will be published in the paper as required by the state. It'll be published, and we have it scheduled for next Tuesday. After you approve it Monday night, it'll be published in the paper for Tuesday. And again, this just, basically, it's set up on how we budgeted. It has the revenues, the type of revenues by fund. And then it also shows the expenditures by fund and then what our balances are at the end of the year.
That's nice.
All right. I don't have any questions. Do you?
Yes, sir.
I will say that the information's very well laid out because I went through that Friday and again today. So it's nice not having to try to decipher the reports. A great job on that.
Yeah.
Number four is a resolution amending the City of Burlington Money Purchase Plan, number ten eighty-six eighty-two.
So this plan was created back in March twenty-first of twenty sixteen. This is a plan we have with I C M A R C. It's a retirement plan specifically just for the city manager. So the city managers, when they come in, they decide, are you gonna join I PERS or what? So when Jim came in, he decided that he wasn't gonna be in I PERS and that he would have a separate fund that would, we would match the I PERS requirements. So this plan we created back in sixteen, which is a few years after he had been here, but we kind of separated it out. Basically, we put in the, the current I PERS contribution, which is nine point four four. So that hasn't changed. What's changing is, is we're allowing him to make a contribution schedule. So before that box had been, no, he's not required to put anything in, or he can elect, or.
He wasn't able to opt in?
He wasn't able to opt in because we didn't have the plan set up correctly. So now we have it opted in. He, his contribution schedule is twenty percent of his earnings. So if sometime in the future he wants to change that to a different percentage, we would just update the plan. But the plan is pretty restrictive like that. So that's why we're amending it, and this is the First Amendment. So once we approve it next week, it will be faxed off to I C M A and then we'll change his payroll deductions.
All right, cool. No questions?
I'm good.
All right, number five, resolution authorizing fund transfers for the fiscal year twenty twenty.
So this resolution was new last year that the legislation, legislative session, they wanted more transparency. So this is where the, anytime you do a transfer, it has to be approved by resolution before we make the transfer. So basically, this is our transfers for the current year we're in, twenty twenty, which I do transfers in December and then in June. So basically, you've seen these amounts haven't changed from what's in the FY twenty budget. But it's just another step to get it in front of you. And also, we're explaining in more detail the fund that, you know, the transfer's coming from, where is it going and why? So the purpose is all there. So if anybody has any questions, and these are annual transfers. So as long as I'm transferring under these amounts you're approving, I won't have to come back to you. But maybe in June, something will have changed and I need to do another transfer, then I could come back to you and make sure that one gets approved. But again, this is just more for transparency. Cities were making transfers. People didn't know why, so.
This should have been set up for some cities years, years ago.
Right, right. And then, so this got approved, I think, in April of twenty nineteen. So when we did the budget in twenty, it was already done. So this budget season, this resolution will probably be approved with the budget too, just so we're, you know, it's all there at the same time.
Makes sense.
Yep.
All right, questions? All right. Number six, resolution approving purchasing policies and procedures.
Steph, just take a nap right up there, would you?
I know, I know. Well, this should be familiar because you just approved this last council meeting. But I sent it off to the state and I missed a section I needed to get in there for the federal procedures. So that's why you're seeing it again right away. The section that I added, sorry, get back to it, but other than that, nothing has changed. I added under E miscellaneous, number eight. We do need to spell out that we will not do a contract with a cost plus percentage, which we have never done. But basically, we're just spelling it out. You gotta have a bid and you gotta have materials and you gotta, you can't just say we're gonna charge you so much per hour. That's basically what that cost, percentage of cost, construction method is. So that's the paragraph I forgot. So it's in there now and then we'll just get it approved in the same month again, so. If any of you has any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Sticking out through all those?
Yeah.
Thanks, Steph.
Moving on, number seven, Eric, resolution amending fees and charge, charge schedule at Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course. I got that one.
Fees were last changed there in the twenty eighteen golf season. We evaluate these on an annual basis. Looking at the season passes, increasing those on average about three percent for the maximum for day passes and trail fees for the golf cart rental and for the season passes, keeping the daily rates the same. Looking at adding eighteen-hole punch card. That's something we've been asked before. I guess giving that a try. It's essentially playing nine rounds and getting one for free at that rate. And then doing a nine-hole league pass. We had some that if they aren't able to show up or cancel or have a sub, this just can make it easier for everyone having that season or league pass for one league. We do compare to other golf courses in the area. Some are more comparable than others. We do look at Spirit Hollow, which isn't quite as comparable, but also Schaefer down in Fort Madison. They've raised their rates the last couple of years and our, I think, our season green fee or season pass is at seven hundred and fifty currently. They've raised that quite a bit over the last couple of years. So we're still competitive. I think we offer a better value and have a little better course than they have. But we wanna make sure we're not kind of out left field as well in our rates. So we do compare those two area courses and feel, feel that we're competitive. We offer a great value and have a great course.
Are, are we doing some kind of advance to buy these passes?
Yeah, so if you sign up by February twenty eighth, twenty twenty, do have some gift card options there for kind of a refund for individuals that sign up early. We kind of try and promote that for prior to Christmas and holidays. And I've done that the last couple of years. And then do have the cash discount as well for those that are able to pay by cash.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm groovy.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Number eight, set a date for public hearing, December second, twenty nineteen. Number A, consideration for sale of vacated portion of the former alley right away located north of the property at twenty-four oh eight and twenty-four tenth Flint Hills Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Right on.
Moving on to the discussion items. Number one, first up is D P I Annual Report. Mr. Freiberg. I can't promise for the mayor.
Stephen, let's have that. Hey, I was shopping at Hy-Vee, I think it was last week, and your wife came out of a wall. I've never seen anything like it. It was just, it was the most unbelievable thing. She just popped out of a wall and she said, hello, mayor. I said, what? It's amazing.
Thanks for letting me come here this evening. You know, we've had a lot of things going on with D P I. So I thought I would kind of give you a rundown of where we've been at, because it's been a while since I've kind of given you just a broader overview of what things are happening. So I kind of broke this down into two parts. One is kind of an overview of what, of downtown itself and then going into Downtown Partners. So what is downtown Burlington? About forty-two blocks, depending on how you count it. Hundred twenty-three buildings, give or take a few, three historic districts, hundred ninety-two employers as of today. The full and part-time employee count, that's always very fluid, but we think that's, that's pretty close to the mark. All right, now we have a hundred and sixty-one rental apartments and nineteen condos or single-family homes in the downtown. We have over ten thousand likes on our Facebook page and of course, we have a lot of other amenities and activities as well. When we talk about downtown, what do we talk about? And, and I think you guys are familiar with this, but I always like to let it be known. So the boundaries of downtown officially are the self-supported municipal improvement district. So when we talk about downtown, this is who Downtown Partners works with and for. The, the property owners and businesses and residents in that, within that dotted line. So the, the SMID was established in nineteen ninety-six. Commercial property tax owners within the SMID pay an extra three dollars per thousand evaluation to go towards downtown redevelopment. I like these. When we did the parking study several years ago, I kind of started working with regional planning on some, some deeper information. And they came up with some stuff that I think is really pretty interesting. So they compared census population change from nineteen ninety, two thousand and two thousand and ten. And in those three censuses, the population of Burlington's community went down by six percent. So that's the light green. The, the medium green here are the two census tracts that downtown is part of. And in those census tracts, the population went down by nine percent. However, within the downtown SMID itself, the population went up by ninety percent. So in terms of population, downtown Burlington is bucking the trend for the rest of the community. Also, in terms of age and, and sex distribution, these are population pyramids. And they compare years two thousand, two thousand and ten. So for, for this upper right, this is the community as a whole. The black lines are the two thousand value and the colored bars are the, the two thousand and ten value. So you can see it's pretty stable, not a whole lot changed from two thousand to two thousand and ten. When you look at the downtown population, you see some pretty radical changes. Especially here, you see in, in the twenty to basically thirty-four age range, a really strong growth. So what this tells us is the downtown's population, unlike the rest of the community, is getting younger. It's not getting older. And at the same time, we looked at racial composition. Downtown compared to the rest of the community is more racially diverse. So again, unlike the rest of the community, downtown is growing in terms of population. It's growing younger and it's growing more diverse. And we think those are three important trends to, to keep in mind. Also, you know, I've brought this up several times in the past, property value comparison. This was done again as part of the parking study. This is a page out of the parking study from a couple of years ago. So downtown, or the City of Burlington as a whole, property value is about thirty-four at the time of twenty sixteen, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine per acre. Within the downtown SMID, it's seventy-three thousand six hundred and sixty-two per acre. And within the core of the downtown itself, it's actually a hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars per acre. And that's taking into account the fact that there are a fair number of nonprofits, governmental entities and churches within that core area. So when people ask, why is, why is downtown important? I say, well, if you're a taxpayer, you want to look at these figures and know that downtown is important to your property taxes. Because the more valuable the downtown property is, the less burden there is on the property taxpayer as a whole. And who we are, we broke this down. The first is the, the actual number, the second is the percentage. You can see really half of the downtown employers are, what, which is that group? That's the, the service and professional. So that's banks, that's law offices, accounting firms, financial services, auto repair, that kind of thing. Relatively few manufacturing, really, I, I would say Jefferson Street Bakery is, is the one, you know, solid manufacturing business we have downtown. Housing and lodging Burlington Apartments and Snake Alley Inn, the Airbnb on Snake Alley. Quite a few nonprofits, churches, government, education, S E C offices, things like that. About thirteen percent, nine percent of food and beverage, and about sixteen percent of the downtown businesses are, are retail. And that includes both for-profit and nonprofit retail. So for instance, like a hopefully yours, that kind of thing. So that's an overview of downtown as a whole. And I want to talk a little bit about Downtown Partners. Our mission statement is we are here to preserve and revitalize downtown Burlington by enhancing the economy, infrastructure, historical and cultural features of downtown for the benefit of the community. We became a Main Street community in nineteen eighty-six. We're one of the first five in the state. And we keep monthly records. Every, going back to nineteen eighty-six, we have a monthly record of, of the changes that have taken place downtown. So we know that since that time, there's been three hundred and twenty-nine business starts, relocations and expansions. That's obviously a gross number. That's not a net number, but that's a good indication that we're seeing interest in opening a business downtown. Two hundred and eighty property purchases, that is a net number. Pardon? What's that?
You're reading ahead. So go ahead.
There you are. I learned something read ahead.
Sorry, Stephen. Seven twenty-one, that number's.
Seven hundred and twenty-one building rehabs. That could be anywhere from a business that gets its new sign put up to a whole new building, to complete rehab, to adding upper story apartments.
Oh, great. James is here. Sorry.
No, I thought I'd sneak in before you got it. Well, I think I have another copy for, for the city manager. I'll make sure he gets that. I'll make sure he gets that. Just under, really under 100,000 volunteer hours recorded since 1986. And I'm very happy to report that as of September, we passed the $100 million benchmark in private property investment and acquisition. And I think I mentioned this before. So from 1986 to June of 2011, we saw $50 million in private investment downtown. So that's pretty great, $50 million in 25 years. But it took only another eight years to get to the $100 million benchmark. And we see the rate of investment definitely increasing. For the last full calendar year, we had 21 building projects completed. We've seen 18 so far this year. We had 17 property purchases last year. That was an all-time record for downtown, 17 properties purchased. We're at nine so far this year. 3,001 volunteer hours recorded for Downtown Partners programs and events and activities.
Is that Jim?
That is Mr. Freiber. I believe he's in that picture.
Yep.
He sure is. I won't, he might be wearing the same clothes, Jim, I don't know.
I am. It was a Monday.
Looks like he's picking his nose, but please continue, Steve.
I will. 22, about 2,300 volunteer hours so far recorded this year. 2.4 million dollars in private investment last year and we're about on track with that again this year. 54 Downtown Partners event days in 2018 and this year we have 49 on the calendar. So events, that's what we're known for a lot of. People know that we do the holiday parade coming up and Vintage Market and Farmer's Market, Living Windows and Criterion, things like that. But we do lots of things besides events. We do Blade Sign Grants for downtown businesses. We nominate Main Street Iowa Awards. Last year, 2018, Waken Bake was awarded Business of the Year, Main Street Business of the Year. We plan to maintain the downtown flowers. I don't know how many people realize this, but Downtown Partners received two grants through the Iowa Housing Authority and now done through Iowa Finance Authority. 22 apartments were funded through grants received from Downtown Partners. We do Main Street Challenge Grants, things like the Collective that just opened at 805 Jefferson, the former diner area of the Depot, a number of others. We've been really fortunate to get Challenge Grants lately. The last three or four years, we've been able to apply, downtown businesses have been able to apply for, open for business competition grant funds through IEDA. We of course have done the Lightscape project, the steeple lighting, and now we're working on the bridge lighting, also looking at ways to augment the lighting of Snake Alley. Marketing, along with the Convention Visitors Bureau, we do a lot of marketing. We've really kind of stepped up our regional marketing as well. We have two different commercials running on cable this holiday season. Obviously, we assist the city with a lot of efforts. We worked hand-in-hand with Eric's department on the Community Development Block Grant for the facade renovations, but also the Complete Streets Plan, the Flood Task Force, the Parking Committee that's ongoing, the recently completed Area Wide Plan, Green America Cities, and Keep Burlington Beautiful, which is really a multi-pronged effort there. Through Main Street Iowa, we can offer design consultation at no cost to downtown businesses and property owners. This year, we were also lucky enough to get some free merchandising consultations. We had visual merchandising specialists here in town for two days to consult with several businesses, again, at no cost to them. I do a monthly downtown update e-newsletter that contains kind of a snapshot of all the news for the month and that goes out to about 3,500 people. Just a couple of weeks ago, we worked with the BHS Music Boosters to put up the downtown streetlight wreaths. We do that every year. Of course, we've talked a lot about 300 Washington, all the work that's going on there. Tours and presentations, I think I did Lions last week and Rotary the week before. And earlier today, I gave a very cold, quick tour to a group of BHS art students. I love giving tours. So that's just a quick overview of some of what we're up to. Wanted to touch on this, where do our funds come from? Because I think, again, there's some misconceptions. You know, I certainly talked to a lot of people who think Downtown Partners either is the chamber or we're part of the city or whatever. 34% of our funding, actually, I'm skipping ahead for myself. 34% of our funding comes from program income. And that's either sponsorships for events, which is part of the reason we do so many events, or maybe if there's a cost to participate in those events. Beautification grant income pays the bulk of the cost, the 5% for the downtown flowers. About 4% is raised through our annual 144 envelopes fundraising drive. 30% more or less, year to year, comes from the SMID, from the Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District levy. And 6% in 2019 came from the city. The City of Burlington contributes $15,000 a year to Downtown Partners program and that's been the case since 2006. It was actually higher before 2006, but it's been at that $15,000 a year level ever since. And the reason for that is that it's not incumbent on Downtown Partners as an organization to improve downtown and it's not incumbent on the city, staff, and council to improve downtown and it's not incumbent just on the downtown business and property owners. It really takes all of us working together to do it. And I think it's been a pretty effective model. A little bit more on funding. I went back and totaled up, I do since I started this job in 2008. So since that time, we've received $2,752,000 in grants. And of that, 1.45 million was awarded specifically because we're a Main Street program. We have received some grants through the state or through local foundations that that wasn't a requirement, but more than half of the funding was awarded to us. And being a Main Street program that's undergone annual accreditation was a requirement of that. So we've received $15.29 in grants for every dollar invested in the program by the city since 2008, which I think is a pretty good return on investment. And I also want to make it clear that we don't financially benefit from these grants. We are the pass-through for this funding. It goes into flower pots, it goes into apartments, it goes into facade improvements, that kind of thing. And I wanted to end up, just talk about a few of the trends that I've started to see because I think, you know, Downtown Partners as a preservation-oriented program looks towards the past but we're also looking towards the future. So I see continued strong interest in the restaurant sector. We're very proud of the all locally independently owned restaurants we have downtown. It's truly a draw and I think our downtown restaurants are probably the biggest single-dollar generator for businesses downtown. There's growing interest in specialty retail, which is good to see. We've been seeing some more small retail shops open up lately. At the same time, we're seeing a loss of professional service employers. You know, in the past five to 10 years or so, several attorneys, a couple of banks, accounting firms, things like that have moved out of downtown. As technology changes, they're no longer, it's no longer important for them to be located necessarily close to City Hall or close to the courthouse, something like that. But we're certainly glad to have the really pretty major employers that we still have that are in that sector. We've seen increased outsider developer interest in larger mixed-use rehabs and you guys have talked about some of those. Part of the reason for that is all the small, easy buildings that could be done, the two-story buildings with an apartment upstairs and a retail shop downstairs, most of them have already been done, snapped up. So we're getting to the point now where most of the vacancies are larger buildings that are going to be more complex to rehab and take more dollars. And at the same time, you know, there's limited dollars locally to rehab all the hundreds of thousands of square feet we have downtown. So with that and the opportunity zone, I think we're seeing really strong interest in larger redevelopments. Growth towards the Warehouse District. For a long time, downtown has meant Jefferson Street. And I think with the work that's being done on some of the mixed-use development that we're seeing on Valley Street, probably in the next, say, two years, I think we're going to start to see an expansion of that to the south, which is great because that's certainly where we have a lot of vacant space. Conversations about lodging, and you know about that. We've had several people who've, you know, tested the waters in terms of building a hotel downtown. That remains our biggest, our number one wishlist item. We really would like to see some lodging downtown. And along with that, we're seeing increasing visitor numbers, more people coming from out of town and that's why we know that having lodging downtown will get them to stay longer, spend more money, and shop and eat here more. It's interesting to talk to the restaurant owners and retail owners and find out where people are coming from. They're coming from Quincy, they're coming from the Quad Cities. And you'd be amazed how many international visitors we have in towns. It's pretty amazing. Along with the increased visitor numbers, this is kind of interesting. We're seeing changes in hours. And on one hand, downtown is no longer an eight-to-five downtown where everybody leaves at 5:00 and closes up. But we are seeing more retailers and some restaurants shift to a Thursday, Friday, Saturday model. I think they're seeing themselves more as catering to those weekend visitors rather than necessarily catering to our local population. I think that's part of why that's happening. So that is a very quick, but still like the overview of Downtown Partners and what we've been up to and hopefully where we're going. And if you had questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
It's a good presentation. Bummed that it's just me and Johnny.
I am too.
Here, they'll have to watch it on TV.
Yeah. I'll make sure they get copies, so.
But thanks for addressing some of the misconceptions.
Sure.
I think it is, it's been exciting and heady times for a while for our downtown. And when you see a couple of places that are looking to go in now, a couple more bars and restaurants, boy, it's exciting. I do have one wishlist though to add to your Lightscape, the Burlington sign.
Yeah, you know, I just, just last week met the new manager there and I think I'm going to be encouraging her to talk to their corporate office to do that. It would be great. And it was lit for like a small amount of time, it seemed like, like a year or two, and then it went out again.
I think that was before LED, but with the LED, it should be a lot more economical and cheaper.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see that done.
Go get them.
Yeah. And you know what Chelsea and what they were talking about earlier with the Viking Cruises, that's, you know, something else that's really going to change downtown, the way the retailers interact with the customers and, you know, they're looking at 15 stops a year for the first two years, possibly increasing after that. So it's a big change.
It's great. Okay, that was, that was good. Now we'll let you catch your breath and we're going to have a, number two is request to waive the ROW permit fee for 300. I assume that's Washington Street, the Typerner Shop, Steve Freiber, again, you're back.
So we are making progress with work at 300 Washington. We're having another meeting tomorrow and I'm hopeful that at that point, we can determine for sure the contractor that we're going to go with to work on the property. I was contacted by Public Works that reminded me that we need to get a right-of-way permit for blocking the parking, the spots on the east side of the building. And so we're thinking, estimating that work on this building is going to take roughly six months. We're heading into winter and we know that Masonry work especially is not going to take place when it's super cold out. Totalling up the costs, it's $75 a space per month. So that would run us a little bit over $4,000 for six months. And so we're asking the council to waive that fee. That is money that we would prefer to put into building repairs. At this point, the Washington, just to the west of our building, is only used occasionally in the evenings. Good, the restaurant up to the north has a lot of on-street parking available around it. And then of course, the parking lot directly across the street is going to be converting mostly to free spaces if it hasn't been already. So I'm not seeing that there's a whole lot of demand for parking and I think especially when that parking lot across the street changes, people will be able to park off-street and not worry about tickets and that kind of thing. So I'm asking the council to consider waiving that fee to let us again, kind of put more dollars into the renovation of the building.
So where would we, would we set something like that up with a term date on it?
You would do a resolution to approve waiving the fee for the duration of the project.
Could we put a term date on it?
Yeah, you could put, you could put a time limit on it.
Yeah, just because, you know, my concern would be, and you, whatever you think is well shaped, but my concern would be is that we would waive that and that we would have, you know, delays and that becomes a long-term problem. So the other thing, I've noticed that some more bricks have fallen down, so I'm really concerned about the safety there.
Yeah.
In regards to safety, you had asked about that.
Yes, I did.
We had Larry, Larry Caston went and took a look at it. I don't know if he's had a talk with you yet.
He emailed me on Friday, yeah, and I knew you guys were out yesterday.
So, and I think he was, he had an estimate to the shoring up that he thinks needs done to really kind of hold that building in place until you get the permanent fixture done. He thought would be about 4,000, was kind of a rough guess for what, and I don't know where you were at for getting it done.
I'm not an engineer, so I looked at his drawing, but I'm not going to make any determination on that. I know the engineer that we're working with is going to be meeting with us throughout. That's going to be one of the things. We, we're absolutely concerned about bricks falling. We don't want to endanger any life.
Well, not only that, if you don't get it done within a given timeframe, we're going to have to do it ourselves. So, and that's part of, part of the intent for him, getting in contact. When that shored up, the concern that you raised on that, he felt that you could actually pull the chain link fence into the curb line while, while you have a period where you're not doing any work.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's what my concern is, that it probably needs to come out further than where it was at now, right?
Unless you get that shored up.
Right.
Yeah, that's part, that's where he was looking at, that just needs to get done.
Yeah.
So if, do you have, once you talk to the, your engineer, can we, can we get a report from you as far as how long it's going?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, we want to get that taken care of as soon as possible. We just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Okay.
I'm Groovy on waiving the right-of-way permit fees.
Okay, I am for, up for a period of time. And just because I want to see activity on it, we already went through a problem on another location downtown where it seemed to drag on forever and I don't want to hurt the merchant that's there, the two merchants, so.
And we, yeah, we want to get work started on it immediately. I don't, I don't expect it to look better before it looks worse, especially like I said, going into winter. But we do think that that six-month period, that should, we should be able to get it taken care of. That's also the length of time that we have that fence rental for, so.
I'd be cool with up to six months.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to number three, FYI, or fiscal year, sorry, 2020, 2021, way too much texting.
FYI.
Budget calendar.
For your information.
Way too much texting in my life.
So in the packet was just, just put some dates out there. I know, John, you're the only one here, so you probably need to check with the others and the newly elected. But this is kind of set up like we did it in the past, where we do some work sessions, but then we also meet on the Thursdays instead. I know last year we did some Tuesdays, but so we really need to see.
What's on the other night?
Yeah.
What, what works for everybody. So I know we're not going to make a decision on this, but if.
I, what I would do is I'll reach out tomorrow to all of them individually and see if they have any conflicts.
Yeah, on these and then, you know, if we need to adjust times and then.
Because the only, I think the Mondays were, because I know for Mr. Mop and they're moving the school board meetings to Tuesday, so that would be a conflict there, so. I will get back to you right away on that.
Yep, that's fine, we're just starting to get it out there, so.
All right.
Do you have anything to add?
You okay with it? I expect you to see it.
Really doesn't matter, I won't be here soon.
Yeah, you'll be there. All right, thank you, Steph. Moving on, five-year road plan. Hi, Nick.
So I'm fully prepared to give the presentation. It's like probably 25, 30 minutes worth of talking. I didn't know if you wanted to do it with more of a full crowd of. worth of talking. I didn't know if you wanted to do it with more of a full crowd of staff, so. I could, I could give it again. It would be the same thing.
Let's just, yeah, let's just wait.
Okay, and then moving on, number five would be deer hunting in city limits. Are we in the same spot with that one?
And you had a specific council member who was pushing, requesting it to speak, brought forward, and?
Mr. Rinker?
No, Linda.
Oh, really? Okay, well, then you want to, you want to back that up then?
I would say we'd wait and talk to that when they're all here, yeah, so.
Chief?
And staff, or?
Yeah, I'm just, I want to give you just a little insight. There's nothing that, if this waits, it's not going to be a rush anyway, because there's nothing that's going to happen this year. It would all happen the next hunting season, which would be next fall, so if there's decisions that need to be made, postponing in a couple of weeks ain't going to delay anything. Nothing's urgent.
All right, well, that's good. So I guess we're done with that. Anything from staff?
Just a reminder, I sent out an email. We're going to have a ribbon cutting at the Todd Spot Playground tomorrow at 1:00 PM.
Ribbon cutting at what?
The Todd Spot Playground, adjacent to Denkworth Park Pool at 1:00 PM. It's a playground, kind of a toddler-age, preschool-age playground with proceeds from the Bridge Run funded, helped fund that construction, so 1:00 shouldn't be a very long ribbon cutting with the weather, but we'll have that nonetheless.
Keep the speeches to a minimum?
Yeah.
All right, any, Nick?
Did you bring your cellphone up with you? Did you want to show the camera what?
Oh, I'm not showing. No one needs to see that. Just to give you an update a little bit on the projects, most of everything is pretty much winding down for construction projects. However, so the railroad crossing at Valley Street and the Burlington Junction Short Line is expected to be poured early next week. Locust sewer separation is still open. They hope to try and get some of that extra work kind of buttoned up next week, when it kind of warms up a little bit, but everything else is pretty well coming to a close. The boiler system, they're expecting to fire that up, I think, tomorrow. It is getting a little cold in there, but it's still not freezing point in there, so expect that to get fired up tomorrow, so.
Okay. Rhonda, did you have anything? Don? No? Chief Trexel?
No.
And Chief Kramer? Jim?
Going into budget season, another couple of, another thing that we wanted to hit on, Nick was doing the five-year road plan to kind of give an update of where we stand on some of the projects that we've been looking at, which, so that you know kind of the thought process that we're bringing in. He's modified some streets from where it was last year at budget time, but we've also got some projects that are significantly larger in scope than what they were before. We also wanted to get the Integrated Management Plan, and I forgot to, I haven't contacted Leo about trying to see when he can give a presentation on that.
I talked to him last week.
Okay. So we wanted to get that here for you, too, so you have a chance to see what we've gotten to. DNR has given some tentative approval to a scope of work that we've brought forward. It will be radically different than what we were looking at doing before under the CSO order, but it will not be cheap either. So, but the thing is, is that it more, it comes closer to meeting some of our larger system needs than what just focusing on the CSO work does, and we kind of want to walk through that, too, because it's, it's a large dollar amount, and it's going to be hard to afford. We still want to stay within our three percent rate increases moving forward, but you need to see where it fits and have it as some of the context for the impact it has on what our potential use of TIF is, what our potential use of debt services between the projects that Nick has to bring forward, and what we need to talk about with sewer, just for how we need to address those things. Mentioned, so we talked down with the, at Washington, just across Street PD Building, we may have an action item this next session. I talked with Bob Jostin about what the framework would be for bringing forward the next step with Merge. They're interested in getting things in place for the next step. It's still not, they still have some contingencies that are built within it, but they do want to proceed with having things in place here. I don't know if we'll have a set date at this next meeting, but we potentially will on Monday's agenda, even though it's not on here. We still, we just need to see what we can get through the attorney.
Okay.
And lodging, as that was mentioned, that is still under some discussions. They're still looking, trying to run numbers on how do they, if they, you know, their, their whole thought process with that, building a hotel down by the auditorium, was taking over management of the auditorium, and they're still gathering information. They've, they've felt a lot better about what they saw for what it would take, what they felt like it would take to change the, the structure itself to, to do what they think needs to be done for events moving forward, but they're still gathering information, like they wanted to know what's, what our history has been for usage down there, and that's something that we have to work on and get them some additional information. So they, they are progressing, at least on their thought process for how, how to address that. Radio?
Radio is supposed to be Shane and Annie. I already lined that up, and really, really for me, it's important. These are your guys' last, last couple of chances there as the official members, so really appreciate you guys doing that, so.
Other couple of things, with the new members, we do need to get them coordinated with Municipal Leadership Academy. The League of Cities puts out some decent trainings of the, you know, basics. I don't remember if you did that the last time or not. I know Linda did.
Linda did. And then coordinate, are we going to do the tour of the departments again?
That would be a good thing to do. Another thing that.
That was really helpful.
Something that we're going to, we're looking at doing different than last time. Patrick O'Connell had, has a schedule of, has like a three-and-a-half-hour training for new candidates, and probably would be a decent thing for everyone to go through. Basic overview of the law of government, go through the Council Manual of Procedures, and some common legal issues, just an overview of how you have to come into the position. So we're going to need to get that, whether that's going to be an evening or a Saturday-type session. He's done that a few places, and the level of what, what I think the group could use is that three-and-a-half-hour deal.
Does he mention when to call in and?
Yes, that's on that list.
Good.
Yes, that is on that list.
All right. You're on it, boss. You're on it.
The other, other thing that, you know, today I was up at the Legislative Policy Committee for the League. Just for this next legislative session, they looked at some of the major themes that they saw that are going to impact city business. I-Will Funding, that's Iowa Water Infrastructure, whatever that is. It's the three-eighths penny that was set aside in the past for the next three-eighths penny sales tax that was done for water quality. That is something that, the way the rules are currently written, if that were implemented, that three-eighths would have a portion that is for water, water and sewer infrastructure. That is something that we would want to make sure is protected. There is, there is some desire to have serious consideration given of that, but it's all going to be important, it's all going to be dependent on what gets put with it, whether that's tax cuts, whether that's sales, income tax cuts, or whether that's mental health funding or what the issue is, because they're going to, most likely, they're going to be talking about a full penny increase. So there's other groups that are lobbying for how the rest of that money's used. One of the things that we'll want to make sure is not used as an offset on there is backfill. That's been one of the things that's been talked about. If they're going to have a backfill discussion, let's keep it separate and have it done on its own merits. Have them put to the task of defending why they're not upholding their promise on backfill. Taxation, they had a fairly large consideration of property tax changes last year. Some of the more significant ones were not included. We did get a core change in how the budget process is going to be done this year, but it's not as onerous as what it potentially could have been. There'll still be some discussion of that, and really, from what I understand, it's, a lot of that's going to be a philosophical discussion of how do you fund government? How do you use income taxes? How do you use property taxes, and what roles should they be filling? And I don't know that there will be an answer. It was really mentioned, this is an election year, and nobody really wants to get too far out of their framework, but that will be in, be a potential issue that's up there. I know that we had a discussion at one point for progressive structure of fines for felons with guns, liken to see that increase over time, and that was, I don't know how much you have pushed on that, Chief. I know your predecessor did. It was mentioned that anything on firearms, that direction, this is not the legislative session for that. This is a legislative session that will really be pushing for limitation of any rules on carrying, and we'll look to move the boundaries the other direction on that. So that's just some of the context of what the session looks to have on it, TIF and tax abatement. We are fairly sure there will be a bill that's, there's, almost every year, there is a bill brought forward. Last year is one of the few rare exceptions where one wasn't, but the structure of the leadership on the Senate side will almost guarantee that there is a TIF bill. And that's really kind of all I had for now.
Okay.
So.
You got anything?
No, I'm good, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for letting me run the meeting tonight, Shane, and doing all your work. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody who was watching at home, and thank you, staff, and everybody.
Getting used to it. Oh, and thank you, Carolyn. The, Steph, the volume is good. The picture, I guess, tonight was not very good. Yep. Steph is on it.